You ready?
Yeah, but she's not gonna wanna wait.
Yes, sir.
Ready to call this Luray Town Council Work Session in session? Let's all stand for a moment of silence, please. Mr. Webb, will you lead us in our pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Danielle, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Dachemeyer.
Here.
Mr. Baker.
Here.
Ms. Liewen.
Here.
Mr. Sharrow.
Here.
Mr. Tettit.
Here.
Mr. Saddle.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Pretty light crowd tonight, I guess everybody's at the fair. All right, Mr. Burke, special use permit 21-03, Two Mechanic Streets.
Yes, sir. First item for council's discussion tonight is a request from Shenandoah Valley Electric Cooperative to construct a storage building at Two Mechanic Streets. This property is located in the Light Industrial Zoning District, which requires a special use permit for any construction in that district. They are looking to construct a 45-foot by 75-foot metal building for storage and repairs. The parcel is located within the AE flood zone with a base flood of 782 feet. The proposed finished floor elevation is 777 feet and a half feet, and they are taking steps to flood-proof the building. The Planning Commission will be conducting their public hearing at their normal September meeting. The SBDC has requested council's consideration to conduct a special meeting at your September work session so that this can be considered and approved, so they can begin work in October, and that will coincide with the next item on your agenda for tonight.
All right, end discussion?
The building height of a storage building at that location is what got me into local politics, actually.
[laughing].
It was, yeah, questioning the height, if it would, to make sure they wouldn't exceed the height of any of the other structures, that it wouldn't be a new tallest point.
Then I asked you if you want to be on the Plan Commission.
Yeah, this guy came by the house, yeah. [laughing]. That's where it all started.
What is the height, Steve? Do we know?
Seventeen feet.
Seventeen. Is that on here?
It is.
On the plan.
On the elevation.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. Steve, is there an existing structure there they're gonna demolish?
Yes, sir, there is.
And how big is that? Do we know that?
I don't believe that it's a 17-foot-tall structure. I believe that it's probably in the order of magnitude of a 20 by 20 by maybe 14. So this is definitely a larger footprint.
Steve, when you go to the map of it, I see where they wanna put it, the yellow rectangle. I don't know what that dash violet line is. Is that like a pathway or road or something within their grounds? It's a lot of stuff.
What are you talking about, Ron?
Well, since, I, I, it's very faint to the right of the yellow structure. I see some purple dash lines.
That's a power, it's a power company diagram, so there's underground. They've got, the markings on here are like out on the County Street, where they have the yellow lines, those are service lines, and some other things.
Okay, I was wondering if that was hydrants with, no, okay, so that's their, that's their markings. Got it. I think there's little vehicles they got, we don't see them.
Put that on our wish list. All right, any other discussion? All right, Mr. Burke, rezoning, Luray Landing.
Yes, sir. The other item that will be included in a special meeting at your September work session is a request from Baker Development to rezone four parcels from, I'm sorry, yeah, four parcels from Business B1 to Planned Neighborhood Development, so that they can be reincorporated into the Luray Landing for future residential development. This will accompany an update to their developer's agreement. We've not received the final version of that yet, and they have indicated that we will get it before the end of the month, so that we can have that available to advertise for the special meeting. And again, the Plan Commission will be considering this at their normal September meeting.
All right, so there's that one duplex house, or there's at least one, two old guys live out there, in a house. Are these properties close to that one, so it's not just all?
Yes, sir.
'Cause I remember us having trouble with that, thinking about how they can, you know, put like a 7-Eleven.
The duplexes are located right here.
Okay.
And the lots that they're looking to reincorporate are this one, this one, this one, and this one.
So that'd be housing.
They would be housing. And they originally were part of the Planned Neighborhood Development.
And taken out.
And then they were pulled out for commercial development, and now they wanna be reincorporated back in as residential.
This would be, you said it'd be scheduled for non-28?
Yes, sir.
Are we meeting at a different time? If the Plan Commission hears it in September, then we would hear it at first, our meeting in October.
Well, no, the intent is to change your September 28th work session to a special meeting, so that you can conduct the public hearing at that time. Both of these applications are fairly time-sensitive, and it just works that the town can work with the two applicants. Since you already had a regularly scheduled work session, we can identify that as a special meeting, and you can't conduct a public hearing.
That's fine, as long as it's advertised, I guess, or whatever. Why did they do a separate application for each, you did a separate application for each lot?
I don't have an answer for that. We simply asked them to do one for everything, but we got one for each.
Okay, okay. I didn't know, did they pay a fee for each one?
No, sir.
Okay, one, just one, okay, okay.
And we will conduct just one public hearing for all.
Yeah.
I wondered about that, too, Ligon, why?
Yeah, I was sorry.
Unless they think maybe we could pick or choose, I don't know.
You just put it all in one ad, I'm sure it's in one ad, but.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
All right, anybody else on that? Any more discussion on the rezoning? All right, Mr. Burke, Page Valley News advertisement.
Yes, sir. The town has received a request from the Page Valley News for our consideration of advertising on their website. They are proposing, the town utilize the little banner indicated right here, that would be on, at the header of all of the Luray news pages. The cost for that is $2,800, or $2,080 per year, and it's basically a 1,000 pixel by, about 200 pixel size. It would be available to anyone that visits the Luray Page News, and they indicate that they would also include that if there's any Luray news that they link on their Facebook page would also be included in that.
Well, could we have, where you, if you click that banner, you get, you get a link that goes to our page, or something like that, or is it just?
That, I'm not sure, but I think.
Well, that'd be cool there, if they, you know, actually clicked it, it took us to our own stuff, as opposed to just being some words.
We can ask. They didn't, they didn't indicate that when, when they presented this option.
That's where I really see the value in that, is if it would take.
Take us to us.
Link to our page.
And then we could have that link go to different things we wanted.
I'm pretty sure.
Is that, I don't know if that's.
I think it's, or not, yeah.
I think you can link your website, you can link your Facebook page, you can link whatever.
And if I'm asking if that $2,000 is expensive, I don't know if it is or not.
Well, is, to clarify, so this is when, only when someone clicks on a Luray tab on the page, so it's not on the homepage.
Correct.
And so how many, are there actually 50,000 to 75,000 views of the Luray page, or is that of the website itself?
That's the total website.
So that's, those are two really different things.
Oh, yeah, because it says page views, so.
Right, so.
I read that to be on this particular page, where he's advert, where he's offering this special, so.
I didn't get that, but I can confirm if that is.
Whichever way, I mean, yeah.
But the way it reads, it implies that on this particular page, right, 50 to 75 page views.
Potentially. I mean, yeah, it could go either way.
Because it should say website views, if it was right, to the site generally.
Sure, sure, that would make sense, yes, yes, but, just to clarify.
Yeah, I agree.
So, my question still, is that expensive for this type thing? I don't really know. I've never bought banner space. I wasn't thinking it.
Compared to print media, it's not, I mean, if you.
Yeah, and any one of our meeting advertisements is $150 to $200.
Yeah, okay.
So it'd be what, three tenths of a cent per view, if it's 50,000 page, like Luray page views, I don't know. But I wonder how much of that is already captive audience, I don't know, that's worth looking at.
I think Shenandoah has an ad with them.
Stanley does, too. Stanley, both Stanley and Shenandoah, yeah.
I think that's part of the reason that.
I think that, I think it would, I mean, it, it would bring attention to our, and we'd probably get more coverage, maybe, if we had this banner.
We need to vote on this, Steve?
Well, I, we just, we're hoping to get general direction, if council was comfortable with, with pursuing.
Go ahead with it.
They are one of two new sources for Luray and Page County anymore. There is value to, and if we can include a hot link to the town's website, I'll check and see if that's available, but if council's amendable, we can, we can start working with them, see if we can pursue advertising, and then, what they indicated is that they can change, if we provide them the content, we can change whatever is advertised, if we wanted to advertise for the Fair Sunflower Festival.
That's good. We can change it each time.
Yes, sir, we can, we can make it specific to any, any, any event or, or information that we need to get out to the public.
What funding, what funds are we using for this?
It would have to come from general fund, we, it was not budgeted.
Okay.
If we promote tourism, couldn't we use rescue funds?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm alluding to.
I can, I can ask Jason to see if he thinks that it's, it would qualify.
Yeah, I'd wanna know if it's, if that's 50,000, this page-specific views, and then, if we can use those ones, that'd be good to know.
And let you know.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, the Page Corp. 100th Anniversary Resolution, I think all y'all have a copy. Is there any reason to read it again, or?
Staff just wanted to know if, if there's any changes, otherwise we would include this on your regular September agenda, and we'll notify the staff at, at the cooperative to let them know and invite them to the meeting.
Everybody okay with the wordage? Everybody with anything?
We'll have a presentation given.
Yeah.
I think it's fine.
Thank you, Steve, good job on it. All right, Steve, you're up, you're still up, ARPA update.
Yes, sir. The town had put out a survey, request to our residents, seeking input as far as how the town should consider utilization of the ARPA funding. We had 511 people respond, 335 through the paper survey, 176 through the online. The majority of the respondents indicated that infrastructure, public safety, and, go back my front page, local business support and high-speed internet were their desired applications. Had a meeting with the Regional Commission today. All of the counties, or Page County, Warren County, and a few of the other surrounding counties are working with the local electric providers to pursue high-speed internet to any underserved areas, so that, that area is probably not of interest or of highest use for the town at this point. So, the information, I'm, I'm very happy that we received as many people providing input as we did. Some of the comments are very, very positive, some of them are a little interesting, but we just, it was good that we were able to get some input for, for the council's consideration as we develop the plan. And as of today, we still have not received any guidance, any update from the Treasury on, on the guidance of use of those funds. In talking with a number of other towns that were at the meeting with the commission, a lot of them are adopting a, will slow down and wait to get further guidance to make sure that we don't wind up having to repay any of the funds at a future date.
As I mentioned, I'm hopeful we'll be able to go to BML, or hopefully that will, will go on as scheduled, we'll certainly learn more there.
Comments that people put were interesting.
That was really helpful, though.
I wondered how many times Joey put in about the splash park, though.
Uh-huh, 14.
I think some people, and it's understandable, are confused that the town sometimes, you know, pave Page County roads.
Yeah, somebody wants to clean up the river.
It's kind of all over the place, but I still think the general themes and what we've talked about spending the funds on are, seem to be pretty, and I'm actually surprised how many people mention infrastructure and utilities, so, yeah, I thought, I thought that we're pretty consistent with what we've talked about so far.
And if you look at the graph, other than the tourism support, the general, it follows a pretty similar line there as far as people's opinions, or how they prioritize, until you get to the tourism part, and that went sort of all over the place, but the, the other priorities are.
It's pretty tight.
Yeah, pretty tight.
It diverged there, I guess it diverged on infrastructure or something.
Yeah.
Good work compiling all that, Steve, you know, was it nine pages of comments?
Yes, sir.
Are we gonna make that available to anybody, or we are?
It'll be. We'll be putting it out to the public tomorrow, so that they're, they know that their, their comments were received.
It's on the webpage right now. All the comments.
Okay.
It's in the packet, so, yeah.
It's in the packet, when you download the packet.
But we'll be putting an independent release of it. Can I make it, there's, there's some, some of these comments have some identifier, personal identifiers to it, I think that should be redacted from.
That one guy left his name and number.
I mean, yeah, the ones that actually give names and addresses, I don't think that they thought that, I'm assuming that, that some of those people probably did not think that would be made public.
Yeah, it'd come to us, that'd be far as it goes.
Right.
Is there only one or two of those, Jason? I didn't.
I saw like three, I believe, in it, that either give an address, or a name, something specific. I would just suggest that we, we cannot share that. Still share their comment, just not the identifier.
That's probably a good idea. All right, any other comments on the survey? All right, Luray Farmers Market, Mr. Webb?
Yeah, this is just a, again, just a kind of initial conversation, and I guess my inspiration for this was going up and down Main Street for many years, when you get to the top of the hill, you know, we have those two vacant spots, and I really don't think the, the future prospects for seeing any real, you know, development or infill development are probably real strong, it's, as long as I've been here, it's, you know, it's been vacant. I guess over the years, as, as West Main Market has kind of utilized that space, put picnic tables, and you go by there on a Saturday or a Sunday, you know, fall or spring or summer, and you see all the people out there congregating, it's just sort of, I keep coming back to the idea of that it would be nice to develop some sort of public space in that area. I sort of, to come to the, you know, sort of, it's a farmer's market, because going to different communities, in Culpeper, and Orange, and Scottsville, and different places that I've been to, you see those permanent, you know, facilities, and as a matter of fact, there's one in the VML magazine this week, I think it was, I always say it wrong, Chilohawee, had developed a facility. So, I've identified a parcel across the street where at least an owner, Ms. Kramer, I've talked to her last week, and she's, I mean, she actually had thought about this, and she's, she's very interested in working with the town to, basically, any plan that we could come up with, she's, she's willing to, to do a long-term lease, but kind of put that to the side. I guess, you know, what I thought was, if there was a permanent farmer's market, and again, the size and those variables could, could, could sort of, could fluctuate, but I also thought, you know, if it's a farmer's market and potentially some sort of public space, I mean, I see other people just conglomerate out there, the picnic tables, maybe if we had something that was inviting to come across the street and sit. As far as, you know, a market facility, I know when I've talked to people in town about it, they mentioned the, the guy up the, up the, on the, I guess in the west of the town that kind of has a private market, and I, I don't really necessarily see that that would be competing with him, I mean, he's kind of open, I think, on Saturdays, pretty much, kind of, you know, kind of compact hours of operation. I sort of envision it as something that could maybe, you know, be first come, first served, people set up, it doesn't necessarily have to be a farmer's market, it could be someone selling Christmas trees, and no, you know, in December, it could be, yeah, people selling produce, crafts, or anything. That's kind of the one that comes to my head, that I've visited in Scottsville, it sort of works, and that's a very large facility. And, and again, developing maybe a, a public space with a, with a farmer's market facility, I've talked to a landowner on one side, and they're more interested in, in selling the property. So it kind of limits it to this, this property, I have not, you know, just reached out to the, the Gingrich's owned, where the tax service is, you know, it probably would need to utilize some of that parking there, but again, that's a conversation that, that, you know, we could have with the Gingrich's, that's where the tax service is. So, I guess my idea is to, is to just get the, just the thought going, that if Melinda's very, very open-minded to it, and very willing to work with the town, you know, Steve has here that a portion of reserve is reserved for required parking for the Lawrence, but I've never seen anybody parked there, and I know a few years ago, we amended our parking code to specifically eliminate parking in the downtown area. So, in an ideal world, I guess, to just sort of maybe get some ideas out there, is to, you know, Virginia Tech has this wonderful design assistant, design, design assistance center, I know the, the rec center had used them, they're always looking for some, some projects and work, maybe we can get on their agenda and have some students come up and kind of put together a vision that, again, maybe would create a space, and this vacant space, that would sort of, I think, sort of give some life to a, to this area, and also kind of dovetail on our tourism, and something that just seems like it should be in Luray. And, you know, lastly, it doesn't really, to me, it doesn't really have to be attached to a, a farmer's market association, it really can just be a, a public facility that, you know, folks can rent a spot out, and maybe rent it out for a season, and, and, you know, first come, first served sort of, sort of situation. So, again, I think over the gets of it, like, just moving, and just, I've, I've been talking about it, just because I ride by there and I just, I see the people out there, and I'm saying, gosh, if it was just something here, it would just really, I think, bring even more vibrancy to downtown. So, that's my two cents.
I've always been intrigued by that lot, Ligon, that something ought to be there, I'm not exactly sure what, but it's, it's a nice big lot in the middle of town. How far down does, who do you say, Gingrich?
Yeah, so.
How far down do they go off that building?
Yeah, they come, if you can see kind of where the, the rough areas, where the.
That where the gravel lot ends?
Mm-hmm, yeah, right. Well, yeah, we could almost accomplish it all on Melinda's lot, but I think that for access and getting maybe some cars in, you know, there might be potentially some people, ideally, that could maybe use or just park temporarily in the Gingrich lot. I, I, I've talked to them before in the past, but, you know, definitely would like to re, you know, wanna reach out to them, but. Who, who was the one next to it? The one on the, on the right. Yeah. That's Lime Burger. Lime Burger. And I did talk to, yeah, it was a very nice conversation, but I think they're just more interested in, in selling. Oh, is that who you were talking about? Right, so whereas, you know, there'd be no acquisition costs, and as far as a lo, a long-term lease, you know, 25, 30-year lease, you know, really at no cost to the town, is what Melinda said she'd be interested in. And that's not totally unusual, I know, like, with the parking lot back here, when they developed that many years ago, there's a long-term lease, that we had to re-up 10 years ago or so, so. Is this something you think that the town would actually manage it, or, I mean, I'm just thinking of the problems we had with the farmer's market when it was down. Yeah, I mean, I, I think it'd be town-owned, and the town would just simply, you know, you just would rent the spaces out, I mean, you could maybe, you know, I think the way Scottsville does, it's sort of first come, first served, if you wanna rent a space out for the whole, the whole season or whatnot, you can, but, you know, that's something that we, things that we can kind of talk about and consider, and maybe see how other communities do it, but I guess the big takeaway, as I say, I don't think it has to be through a, another nonprofit, it can just be sort of a, a town facility, and.
I'm thinking, Ligon, that if, even if we just developed enough, that there's parking and tables, and the tourists that come through town have a place to stop and eat, I mean, I see those tables next to the cafe, I bet everybody's a customer, they just see people there, so they stop and sit for a minute.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of thought maybe a front portion, that maybe it's hardscape, and you have some park, you know, so like a park area, some tables built in, people could sit, and then in the back, again, you could really be a.
Does this drop off in the back, or?
I think it's, it's pretty level. It's pretty flat, it's pretty flat.
So you could have people come in from the back off the main street to the park.
But I do like, I do like the idea of some sort of shelter facility, where people could, could, you know, do vending and sell things, and, again, didn't have to be produce, you know, in the summer, it could be.
I just wouldn't want to see it come, become a yard sale type thing.
Well, there's a concern I have with, that I don't think we think about as much, the farmer's market concept, and if we're talking about crafts, and we're talking about produce, and we're talking about food, from what research I understand, a farmer's market is, if you set up more than three times in a calendar year, you're supposed to pay sales tax, you're supposed to collect Virginia State sales tax and turning in. If you sell over $1,000 worth, you're supposed to report to the IRS and do the earned income. The only thing that bothers me with a town-provided farmer's market is, if someone sets up there and they make hats and scarves, and they sell hats and scarves with no business license, not collecting any sales tax, and let's say they sell as little as $1,000 worth of hats and scarves that year, our other bricks and mortars that are selling hats and scarves are a boutique or something, that's, and if 50 people did it, $1,000 a year, there's $50,000 that a local store did not make. It's also sales that were not taxed, that the revenue didn't come. The farmer's market sort of flies under the radar of the sales tax side of it, food products at farmer's markets are supposed to be an inspected kitchen, the food product has to be labeled with the ingredients, allergies, the name, address, and phone number of the person that prepared it, and the date it was prepared. But I go to farmer's markets, and oftentimes, there's a food product there, and it says banana brick, there's a sticker, that's all. banana bread, there's a sticker, that's all that's there. So, the Health Department, I guess, is tasked with enforcing the regulations on consumables, food products. The Virginia Department of Taxation, I guess, is the ultimate authority on collecting the taxes that are due. But where I'm going with this is for the, for the local businesses. And as we look at our reviews here from our surveys, people want to see empty buildings filled, they want to see more businesses, they want to see jobs. I think to create an open market that is unregulated, if it's regulated, I think it's fine, but I think if it's unregulated, it competes with our local businesses that are struggling as well, just to pay the rent, also have employees. Your businesses have insurance, workers' comp, unemployment tax, employment tax. Every nickel that comes through is accounted for. So I don't know how we regulate the side to make it's correct. There are rules and regulations for farmer's market, but I don't think the town in the past has ever enforced it, nor has there been the ability of the Health Department or others to really have the manpower, resources to do. So I guess what I'm saying is, I'm fine with it if it's regulated, but if it's just open, I have a concern. The other thing is, we're living in a time now with social media, it used to be that businesses competed with other businesses. We live in an age now where businesses compete with citizens, between Facebook and, and everything else, somebody selling this, selling that, even a car dealer anymore. It used to be a car dealership, you'd go to a car dealership for the most part, or if you looked into classified ads, you might have to drive however many miles, if you couldn't even see a car. Now, you can sit in your recliner and look at 100 different cars that, within a 50-mile radius that you may want to purchase, and never even walk on a deal with a lot. So, I mean, businesses change. But I just think if we go into, if the town ventures into a farmer's market type of deal, where we're providing this, we're encouraging it, I think the town holds some responsibility for regulating it to make sure that it's being-
Yeah, well, I think the-
-regulated as, as the law says it-
Right.
Or, you know, should be.
I think the only, one concern about other businesses in town, I would just say that I think the more things there are to do in town, the more you pull people out of the cabins, to come into the town, to get on the streets, the more that's just going to benefit everybody.
And, and I'm fine with that, right. But, but it, the, the, the business suffers when others are not paying, when they can sell a product without the sales tax, whatever the, if somebody comes into town and somebody still sells 50 bowls of chili today at a farmer's market with cornbread, that's 50 bowls of food, and they don't collect meals tax or sales tax, there's 50 bowls of chili that some other restaurant or business didn't sell in town. So, I think it just needs to be, if they're paying the tax, food tax, and it's regulated, then it's all good. They're a business, just like everybody else's business. But to require no business license, farmer's market are typically a cash-type business that flies under the IRS for the most part, where any of your walk-in stores anymore will probably run about 80% credit card to 20% cash. It's just a different world, I think, with farmer's markets. And if you get, and look into some of this, you'll see some of the trends, and where this is, where this is going. But anyway, that's just my two cents, that if the town's going to run it or operate it, I think we need to regulate it.
Well, I, I don't mind reaching out and talking to the other communities and seeing how they go about it. I, I think you're going to find it's pretty informal. And that's probably the way, in, in my vision, that's kind of how you want it, is to be somewhat informal. But, you know, if we want to put regulations that they have to have a, a business license, or, I mean, what is it, $40 for the year? I mean, that's, that's reasonable.
Well, I mean, if a nursery, if a, if a local business is selling Christmas trees, and someone else can go up here and sell Christmas trees with no business license, and sells, you know, 100 Christmas trees during the month of November into December, then how's it fair to the business that's, has its license and paying its tax, and are competing with, it's, it's just so, it's so uneven. I just think it needs to be even with all, because that open market's going to affect so many other things. I look at Hawksville Trading. Hawksville Trading has seen good success, and here's all those little pockets of different vendors in there that have little specialty items, all under one roof. I think that there's like different volunteers that share as far as working the cash register, but, but everything that comes through there, sales tax, everything's collected, it's run correctly. Well, why would you rent space at something like the Trading if every weekend you could go up for free and not, and avoid all the tax and everything, you just sell?
I mean, I think you're reading it way too far. It's, I mean, honestly, I think you're making it harder than it really needs to be. I mean, it's just a public space. Other towns have it that have downtowns. You're getting to a real hypothetical, you know, this, that, I, I just don't see it that complicated. But that's just me, and we can, we can, you know, we can talk about it, but I, I guess-
It would probably be wise to ask some other businesses, get some other business input, on how they feel.
I know when we visit communities like you all, probably, if we see something like that, we'll stop by and walk through it and check it out. So it, it is a draw, it is something that brings in people and gives tourists another reason to come downtown and shop at the other stores. So, I mean, I see value in it, and I think you'd have to have a lot of buy-in, a lot of community buy-in, so people actually, there's people there that actually want to run it and do it. And even Ron, your idea, I think it's something I never really think much of, but, you know, most green spaces end up being like recreational areas, but it's also nice just to have some place to sit down and like really socialize. There's not really, where do we have that in Loray, really, not a lot of it.
When, when we were in Boston, we were at some kind of bagel place, and, you know-
Some kind of what?
Bagel place for breakfast. And we'd say, what can we go? And the guy goes, down the block, there's a park. It was a small city park with two benches. It was perfect, you know, and he knew where to tell us to go. So when people come out of the store, they want to sit, I think there's a bench right in that property, isn't there? Do we have a bench right there?
Yeah, there's one in front.
And we do have the pocket parks here.
If we, if we had, if there was some shade in that area, people would hang out in town longer.
That's why I think getting maybe the tech students to do that sort of-
They, they come up great ideas usually.
And they come up great, exactly. And, and again, it doesn't, the farmer's market can only be a, you know, and could be a portion of it, doesn't have to be the dominant feature. It really could, you know, it, it could just be a smaller portion of it, and, you know, that's sort of, you know, now with Broad Porch there, there really are, I have a friend that works at Blue Ridge, she says, he looks out his window, Brian Sowers, and he just says, a lot more people on the street now because of that one business. There are just people walking all the time that used to, you know, years ago, there was, there was nothing there.
And may draw more people to the west end. They complain all this time about, you know, we stop at the line.
I'm just, I believe that the more amenities, the more, it, it trickles to everybody. I, I don't, I just, like, all due respect, I just don't see it as taken away from, from anybody.
When you said a, a lease from the lady, is that a no cost, that she just-
Yeah, I mean, like a dollar a year sort of thing.
Why would somebody do that, just?
Well, I mean, she, she doesn't really see it as having, she didn't think, you know, I mean, I think she did buy it when we had the parking regulations, but, because they told her they had to buy it, when she bought the-
Oh, okay, I got it.
The end, they were like, you've got to buy this.
She don't have any plan uses for it.
So she doesn't really have any plans, she doesn't really, and she said, you know, I have thought about it myself, and just when I called her, she says, I have thought about this for years, and thank you for even reaching out to me about it. So she was just really excited, and said, I would, you know, if anything, we have a prom lot in a key location, the owner's essentially willing to donate it for 25, 30 years.
I think I remember Councilwoman Pence talking about not putting money into structures and stuff we don't own, though. You know, like, put a big investment on that lot that we couldn't recoup after 25 years.
I mean, the improvements themselves of a lifespan are probably about that time, you know, so by the time, you know-
Okay, yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
I, I would just, I think it, it could be a positive thing. I'd be really interested in how it's set up, and how it's managed, and how it's ran. Because we had some real issues with the farmer's market before. It got to be, got to be more of a problem than certainly was an asset. Didn't start out that way, but it ended up that way. And, I mean, I think Jason's concerns are really legitimate. Anytime we start competing with private business, it's, it's, we have to consider that, so. But the idea is of having something there, part of it, a farmer's market or something like that, is just-
Yeah, it's being wasted right now.
Right now, it's nothing there. I just see a public, a public space, a public space. I mean, anchored by several things, potentially.
Well, I can think for festivals, that would be a good place to set up more vendors and stuff back in there, and food trucks. I mean, again, it has a lot of possibilities, I just think we need to-
Yeah. Would, would the, would the council have any issue if I did a little research and talked to some other farmers' municipalities, just to get an idea of how they do it? And then maybe, I don't mind reaching out to some folks at the Design Assistance and seeing if maybe they would be willing to-
Well, how did we go by that in the past? Did we have the town manager contact Virginia Tech students, or when we get their ideas for the bridge and stuff? Would that come from us, or come from-
Yeah, they did, they did the Greenway, Greenway one time, and they've done the, of course, there've been a couple things in town.
They actually did a farmer's market thing right here next to the-
Yeah, it was, it's in the, the 14 comp plan, we showed a-
That's right, that's right.
Right, right, you know, right across the street. And that's, I've been thinking about it ever since, and I liked it so much, you know, that's just me personally.
Have you spoke with the gentleman on West Main Street that's opened up the farmer's market?
No, I haven't, but, I mean, that's been mentioned a lot, and I just want to be clear that I don't see it necessarily as, you know, just in my opinion, it's not necessarily competing, that he's welcome to do what he's doing. And again, I think he's fairly limited in his hours, but we can definitely talk to him and see if, you know, he's interested in, in, in the idea, and, and maybe involved. But I, I just don't see where doing some, something there says that he can't do that anymore, or it would undermine him.
He's what, he's doing produce exclusively, right?
I think so.
Those things that he's growing. He's a nice guy, I'm with you.
Yeah, yeah.
He lets other people come in and set out to me, he lets other vendors come in and-
Does he?
I think he does, yeah, but I don't know.
He told me that if I had produce, I could either sell it to him, that he could resell, or I could do it like on consignment. So I guess that's how he handles extra produce that he does.
Okay.
We bought things there, and it's decent.
Yeah.
It seems to me, Ligon, the key part of this is Lineburger's property. How big is that, and if he's interested in, I mean, we need that to go forward with any of this, or?
I mean, I think, I think we definitely would need probably, at minimum, if we just go forward with the Kramer property, we'd probably need the, the adjoining, and I say the tax parcel, to at least be willing to, to have some occasional parking on that site.
Do you have any idea how far Lineburger, like, comes up the street, or?
I mean, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, so the width of the-
It's a width on that?
Melinda's lot's about 70 foot of width, and I think it's about 200 and some odd feet of depth.
Scale's on there, okay, yeah, okay.
And I think the other ones ba, about the same, but my conversation with, with John was, was basically that, you know, he's interested, but it's really more interested in, in selling the lot. And I appreciate that. So, Melinda's attitude was, you know, she's willing to, to basically, I mean, I say a long-term lease, donate.
Does she still have to mow that every time they get in?
Well, I, and I think that's something we could prob, my, my sort of thought was, if we're going to, if we're going to lease it for, for a dollar a year, I'm just saying a dollar a year, then we would probably maintain it.
Sure.
Probably want to put a water, probably want to put a water, I think there already is a water tap there.
We would bring it, we'd have to maintain it.
I think she has a water, she has a water tap there, so, and if it, but if it didn't, we would bring it there. You know, we'd have a, probably want water there at minimum, improve it in, in that fashion, so.
If they can open air, but like, just a-
Yeah, just kind of like a-
Pavilion type?
Right.
So, slab, on a slab?
All right, anybody else, any other comments on that subject?
What do you think our staff would maybe be to reach out to the, I mean, again, I don't mind talking to the farmer's market, maybe in a month or so, or a couple months, bring back what I found out from the farmer's market, but, I mean, if the staff wants to reach out to the Design Assistance people, and, I mean, they're, like I said-
What did we do before? We just charged them $10 or $15 per space per week, wasn't it, or something, when we had it down there?
Well, we, I mean, we managed, but there was, there was-
Charged them something, didn't we?
There was a management, manager.
Yeah, and, and my thing is, this, you know, if there's an organization that we felt like wanted to manage it, that's fine, but I don't-
Well, I don't know that that is the way.
Maybe wasn't a good experience last time, so, I mean, that doesn't-
Our last experience didn't-
Right. It doesn't have to be associated with an organization, it can just be, you know-
But we got a, how did it work, Mary? We, did we get, we got money from it, but I can't, we didn't get anything from it.
But we gave that money, didn't we?
We actually funded it.
We funded it then.
Yeah, we bought tents.
Bought tents, yeah.
And we sent it on many business licenses.
Okay.
And we bought tables too, didn't we buy that? I think we bought tables for-
We showed good faith.
Then we had that little building over there, we stored all the-
Well, it was, it was really popular there for a while, it did very well there for a while. We used to get big crowds down there, and then all of a sudden, it just-
Just sort of slowly-
Slowly declined.
You know, in, in a facility, we'll, it probably will have some ups and downs, you know, you, you know, it probably will at certain times of the year, and, and certain, you know, who, who's around that's interested, could, could vary from year to year. But, again, just my experience is the one in Culpeper, the one in different places, I'm just, I just can't help, if I don't drive by there, I just see, got to do something in this area. And I think that, so, that's what I got.
Hey, anybody else on that?
So do, on the, on, so just as a little plan, just to be clear, if, if, if I did some research, what other municipalities are doing as far as their arrangements, bring it back in a couple months, and would, would staff reaching out, maybe seeing if we could get some, the Design Assistance people, tech, to come up and, you know, if they want to talk to different people and maybe do some, some, some planning, that could maybe be done this fall, or even next, you know, if it's later in the fall, or early next winter, just kind of put it on their docket and see if maybe they would want to, like I said, they've done so many nice things before for us, and, like I said, did that whole extension on the Greenway, and of course, it never, hasn't come to fruition, but they really put some nice plans together that I thought were good, you know. So would that be acceptable to everyone?
Don't mind further, further investigation, or, or the fact, kind of, binding with it?
Okay.
Sounds good, Ligon.
What happened to that little building that was over there? Did we move that? You know, I walk by it every day, and I can't remember, it's, it's there, is it still there?
It's moved over to Dean.
Oh, okay.
And the chamber was using it for storage. Council approved it's move.
Who are you talking? Who are you talking about?
The, the, the old storage building that was at the SVE C lot-
Oh, oh, oh.
Was moved over to Dean, for storage for-
Up against the fence there, yeah, yeah, I got you.
So that's on the agenda, you know, we don't got time, anybody else, anything they want to bring up? We don't really have council comments. Anybody else? I have no mayor's comments. Steve, I want to compliment you on your, I guess, historical series on Loray. I've lived here all my life, and I'm learning things that I never knew before. That's, uh, it's quite interesting.
We're coming to the end of the book, so if anybody has any other properties, information, pictures, please.
I, I want to say one thing, is on the Loray Inn, I had actually compiled that, I think you might have gotten it. You know, it was Rick Black's grandma, grandmother, I believe, that did it for the WPA, which they went through and did all this historical, you know, analysis of all the different buildings. I think that's where most of it comes from. But on the Loray Inn, I always thought that on a Sunday night, it burned down, everybody got out just, you know, really easy and quick. I always wondered if, if something more to that story, how that thing burned down.
I think there was questionable about that.
Yeah, yeah.
Were there problems with the insurance company, not paying, yeah, yeah, there's all that.
It was, it was very, very strange. And it didn't go, it didn't go to the Supreme Court or something, the state Supreme Court over insurance claims, but it just happened to happen at a Sunday evening and everybody got out, no problem and, you know, so.
We better not go any farther on that.
I don't, I don't think they can file suit against us now.
And, and I can't, I, I can't remember the gentleman who said that he found it in his, his mother's attic.
Was it McKay? McKay was one of the names on there, I think, wasn't it?
Anyway, it was wonderful, I mean, literally, he, he walked in, making, he just, here, make these, don't know what to do with them. And so we were able to scan them and share them. So if, if anyone's watching or if you know anyone that's going through an attic, going through a trunk, please let us know, we're, we're archiving anything that anyone brings in and it's wonderful information for us to keep.
Great job, I think that's it. Brian, any word on our signs for downtown?
Electronic signs?
Yeah.
Do you think that's blew up mine?
Not coming?
Period?
No, the sign contractors have changed to a different contractor and he's going to have to hire a lawyer to try to get his money back from the first contractor, give up with that and-
Not our money there, right?
No, yeah, we had paid them.
Yeah, we did.
So he's going to provide us three equivalent signs through this new contractor at the same place.
But we don't have a schedule yet.
No, I'm impressed, that's all I'm gonna say.
A lot of things are still, still waiting.
I did have a citizen ask me about the wait time at the traffic light by the church and outfitters. He says he sees people push a button and stand there an awful long time before they cross safely. I don't, I don't know.
The pedestrians?
He just, he, in his mind, it was, it was a little bit, timing was, was not as well as it should be, I don't know.